To order the Monday, September 23rd, 2024, 5:00 PM, meeting at the municipal building at 150 East Monroe Street in Withfield, Virginia. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge allegiance led by Councilman Gary Gilman.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is the approval of the agenda, which requires a motion. I hear a motion to move the agenda down.
I say move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, here are none. This would be a roll call vote. And we'll start with Councilwoman Gilman.
Gilman, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Johnson, aye.
That passes. There is a 6:00 PM scheduled recess if necessary. Next is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 9th, 2024. I need a motion.
I say move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? That motion passes. Next on the agenda is a public hearing request, and we have public hearing to consider the proposed demolition of the bleachers of Withers Park. And I believe we're going to have a presentation by Councilman Andrew Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I will do my best not to read this presentation to you, so I just want to point out that there are probably more words on these slides than I will read, but I will hit the highest spots for you and be able to ask, or excuse me, answer any relevant questions that you may have. And before I get started, I want to thank Elaine for her help in pulling all this information together for me. And I'll present it, but trust that she is instrumental in making this happen. So the purpose of the presentation is to provide you all with relevant information as to why there is a recommendation to the council from the staff that the bleachers be demoed. We are cognizant that there are, there could be emotions tied to this property. The property does have historic value, and that we want to recognize that. We want to, we want to walk you through when the bleachers came to be, what they've primarily been used for, and then highlight for you the issues that have been apparent for 30 years that lead us to where we are today and why we're recommending that we ultimately go away with them. I don't know what's, where we're going here. Thank you. I may just have to signal you, Ron, if you don't mind. So in 1930, the town contracted with the Southwest Building Company of Withfield to construct the bleachers as well as the pool. The stadium was to seat about 1,000 people, and then later, and it was set to be complete in June of 1931. There was a ceremony held in 1932 where J.R. McWayne and R.E. Withers dedicated the Evan, what was then called the Evan Sham Field, which included the field and the bleachers at the time. I may just have to go off the screen here. Go ahead. So we've established that in 1932, the bleachers were added there to create what was considered a stadium for Evan Sham Field. From 1948 to about 1989, for the most, most of those years, the field was actually used for minor league baseball as part of both the Blue Ridge League and the Appalachian League. In 1991, the town of Withfield signed a lease with the, with County School Board for the field and the entire property, and then in 1993 established Withers Park, and then began to add park amenities to it, like benches and trees and landscaped areas, the walking track and all those sorts of things. In 1993, it was a concern of the Withfield Town Council and the staff at the time that the bleachers were in pretty rough shape, and they commissioned a study that was conducted by Dewberry and Davis, which was an engineering and architecture firm here and throughout the state. They did a Phase 1 structural visual assessment of the bleachers and considered what the repair options for the town were at that time. Based on that report, it was decided that the repairs were too expensive and too risky because the probable outcome of a success was not very high. We'll get into a little bit more of that in a little bit, but I don't want to pretend that I'm a structural engineer. In 2023, the council again instructed the staff to take a closer look at these bleachers. You all will recall, I'm sure, that every year we had all the, many of the schoolchildren out there for various ceremonies, the wall of honor, excuse me, the run for the wall ceremony would be held out there, and the kids would, would get out there on those bleachers. And I think it made a lot of people nervous, Rick, to have them out there. So we reached out to Prosem Engineering, which is a structural engineering firm that the town uses for all structural evaluations. They brought back to us a very similar report, and there's a quote here, says, "Prosem has determined that the structural deficiencies observed during our visit revealed potential safety hazards, and the Withers Field bleachers should be closed to the public until further notice." At that time, we instructed our Public Works Department to immediately fence off the bleachers, and they've been decommissioned since February of 2023. The Prosem report also basically echoed very much the same concerns that were expressed in the 1993 report, that the extent of the structural damages and the challenges associated with repair were very high. In the spring of '23, the town reached out to, staff reached out to a number of contractors for the repair of the bleacher, excuse me, for the repair of the bleachers and did not receive a single play. You know, basically, this, this type of repair, click on to the next one. I'll get into it a little bit more, but you can see here that the bleachers are obviously primarily of a reinforced concrete material. All of the brick is actually just facade brick. They have no structural, really any structural value at all. And some of the bleachers, go back one, Ron, you can see here that the bleachers at one time appeared to have some wooden seating benches on them that at some point in time, I believe that's what I'm looking at, although I never sat on them, so some of you all may know better than I do. Apparently, at some point, all of that was removed. One more. So this is sort of the state they were in prior to us closing them, just from an exterior visual appearance, but we'll show you some more pictures on the interior of what's maybe some of the more troubling concerns. This, this is, this is a diagram from the 1993 Dewberry Report where they indicate that we have concrete slabs, which are one to two inches, two inches thick with 15 feet between the greater column rows. This is where they describe the brick faces being purely cosmetic. The cracking of the concrete allowed, allowed to penetrate the concrete and cause corrosion of the metal reinforcements creates spalling. Spalling is when the concrete itself begins to fall and chip away and then expose the steel reinforced, reinforcements on the inside. And once that corrosion begins, even though they can't see the corrosion beyond the surface of the steel, they know from their experience and from their expertise that that corrosion extends throughout the steel structures, and we'll show you some more of that. This, this is the spalling here. This is where you see the concrete has fallen away from the reinforced steel, and then they begin to get what they call section loss, which is basically if you have a quarter inch piece of steel that has corroded away, and now we have something less than a quarter inches of steel, then now we're, now we're compromising the integrity of the structure, its weight-bearing ability and all those sorts of things. More structural damage on the inside. You can see these very, very large cracks here that's basically a partial collapse in some of the areas that, what they've indicated that at some point were apparently rebuilt or built in there for reinforcement, but all that has begun to collapse. Right here is showing some separation between the actual slabs that form the bench on the outside. That allows additional water intrusion, which just causes, causes more of the spalling and some of the deterioration on the inside. Again, this, these are just more images of the spalling and deterioration throughout the structure, but, but it's apparent, I've been in there a number of times since 2023 and a few times before, it's, it's, through the entirety of the structure, this is what you're looking at. We're going through. So tonight, the council, after my presentation, will open a public hearing. You'll take comments from the public. Based on the condition of the bleachers and the extent of the structural damage, it is our recommendation that the council make the difficult decision to, to remove the bleachers. We just don't feel that there, the amount of use that they get or any foreseeable use that there is for them would justify in any way the amount of cost it would take to get this to anywhere near a state of repair that would be considered safe. So we, we have, we did budget for this this year. You all are all aware of that, in anticipation that this day would come. We do have funding in the budget to have them removed, and we have received a very, very reasonable quote to get, to get them removed. So it would be my recommendation that you all move forward with the demo following the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Freeman? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we will now open the public hearing to receive comments regarding the proposed demolition of the bleachers in Withers Park. Anybody here this evening out there that came and would speak towards this? You can come, you can come there and just state your name and your address for the minutes, please.
Teresa Campbell. What are, what are the plans after their, the demolition to that area?
Yeah, so you all want me to take that, I'm assuming. So no, no concrete plans, no pun intended, but basically what we're recommending is additional expansion of public uses through parks and everything. You've all have all heard of different ideas around the community, I think, that people are proposing for the park somewhere. Some of the ideas that have been proposed include enhanced playground facilities, splash pad, those sorts of things. So all of those ideas have been thrown out, but obviously the council really hasn't had an opportunity to discuss future of it until we figure out if it's going to come back.
Okay. That was going to be my next question.
Just parks and, basically, I think parks, that would be my recommendation, that it be all park related.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak towards the public hearing? Here are none. We will now close that public hearing. And consideration by town council to approve the demolition of the bleachers in Withers Park. I will need a motion.
Say move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, here are none. This would be a roll call vote, and we'll start with Councilwoman Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Gilman, aye.
And that motion passes unanimously. We'll move on with our agenda. To consider a recommendation from the Withfield Planning Commission regarding the major subdivision application for Ashbury Lane Phase 2, submitted by Fusion Holdings LLC for the creation of 11 lots on Ashbury Lane, tax map partial is 25-70A. At this point, we'll take a staff report from Director of Public Utilities and Engineering, Mr. Anderson.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is second phase of the subdivision of Ashbury Lane. This proposed, this adds 10 new lots to vacant areas along the properties on Ashbury Lane as well as road access along Bammer Drive. The plan as submitted has met all the technical compliance, the zoning subdivision code. There will be no requirement for additional street infrastructure to be constructed, nor any distribution mains of water like there was in the first one, the first phase. All the lots that are proposed in this development will utilize public water systems either along Bammer Drive or what is now the public system along Ashbury Lane. Road frontage will be gained from Ashbury Lane and two lots, I believe, front Bammer Drive for public access. And each lot that's being proposed does have an approved septic design, mostly as produced by Southwest Soils and approved by General Department of Health.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
All right, consideration by town council to accept a recommendation from the Withfield Planning Commission to approve a major subdivision application for Ashbury Lane Phase 2 submitted by Fusion Holdings LLC for the creation of 11 lots of Ashbury Lane, tax map partial is 25-70A. I need a motion, please.
Say move.
I have, okay, motion and second?
That'll be fine.
It sounded like they were both there at the same time. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Right here are none. This will be a roll call vote. We'll start with Councilman Gilman.
Gilman, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Johnson, aye.
I think unanimous. Congratulations to those owners. Next on the agenda is consider ordinance number 1441 and ordinance repealing ordinance number 1435 and ordinance discontinuing and vacating an underdeveloped portion of West Pine Street extending between North 16th Street and North 18th Street in the town of Withfield, Virginia on first and final reading. I believe we'll have a staff report again by Engineer Mr. Anderson.
This request was made by the adjoining property owners, Mr. Housman. The original ordinance was basically brought to you guys for consideration for vacation of that section of Pine Street. The stipulations were indicated that we basically proceed with the receipt of the submitted fair market value of the property. There was also a stipulation about a timeframe that that should occur in, and basically the, basically receive the payment for the, the area, and then basically execute two quick claim deeds to basically transfer the title over to the property owners. We never heard anything back from the proposed or the applicant, and within, I think, 15 days prior to the end of the 60-day period, I submitted a letter to the applicant indicating that, you know, we had basically heard no response from them, and it was, the time period was coming up, if they would like to proceed with, you know, the completion of this, basically this vacation, this public street, to go ahead and, you know, come in and basically submit a, submit a payment for the real estate value and basically so we can, again, execute the deeds of quick claim. That was sent by a letter to the applicant's address as well as uploaded to their application portal online. Basically heard no response back from them, did have a chance to speak with them on the phone, that they indicated that with the restrictions of not being able to fill or build over the water line or alter any of the drain patterns that, that, for stormwater behind there, that that really lent them to the idea that they didn't want to proceed with it, as well as the cost of it. So again, the letters were sent out to them, and basically no response was had after that.
Okay. So basically, this ordinance is really to erase the first ordinance.
Yes, because the original ordinance is recorded, as far as the court report indicating that you guys had approved to vacate that and contention following a couple of the criteria.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Anderson? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, now, continuation, consideration by the town council to approve ordinance number 1441 and ordinance repealing ordinance number 1435 and ordinance discontinuing and vacating an underdeveloped portion of West Pine Street extending between North 16th Street and North 18th Street on first and final reading. I need a motion, please.
Say move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? All right, here are none. This will be a roll call vote, and again, we'll start with Councilwoman Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Gilman, aye.
That's unanimous. Next on the agenda is schedule a public hearing for the October 28th, 2024 town council meeting to consider various appropriations to the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. Staff report by Town Manager Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Basically, we just need to get this on the agenda, and then I will provide you all with, with more detail over the next several weeks. I'd like to actually schedule a Budget Finance Committee meeting, if we can get one together, to look at the changes that we're, we're proposing. I can give you some insight to what they are. I just didn't want to enumerate them all in a report here because I know they're subject to change over the next several weeks. We've had several insurance recoveries that have come in, which are additional revenues that were unanticipated, that department heads typically request because they've used money to make repairs to, to various items that were unanticipated, and then when we get an insurance recovery in for that, they asked us, they typically asked us to replenish their budgets. One of the other requests that we got from a department head was from Chief Slent, who has received notification from the state of Virginia that his aid to localities money has actually gone up. If you all will remember during the budget process last year, you know, we budget an aid to localities revenue based on what we anticipate it being, then we put an aid to localities equipment line in the fire department budget. Since they're getting more and it is required that it be spent, he's asking that we appropriate those funds. So there's just a handful of those little things out there. Another one that I'll touch on, that I want to be brief about, is some anticipated expenditures for 20th Street Bridge. We do have some money in there for 20th Street Bridge, but through our consulting engineers, we anticipate that the money that we have in there for the town's portion, to be clear, all of 20th Street Bridge is not the town's responsibility. The vast majority of it is that of the railroad, but our portion being the deck and the railing, we don't think we have, we basically don't think we have sufficient funds in the budget to cover that right now. And I'll share more on that with you all when I can. So that's the type of things we're looking at primarily. No, no big surprises, no, no oopsies or any, any of that, just, just some housekeeping.
Any questions for Mr. Freeman? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. All right, now, consideration by town council to schedule a public hearing for the October 28th, 2024 town council meeting to consider various appropriations to the fiscal year 2024-25 budget. I need a motion, please.
Say move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not here are none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any opposed? That's passed unanimously. All right, so next on our agenda is citizens' period, and we will start by going down the list here, and the first person that requests to speak is Mr. Randy Schell, and I will ask everybody, when you come to the podium, state your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Randy Schell, and I am the owner of Oracle Books on Main Street, 275 Main Street. So what I wanted to talk about today was the use of the farmer's market facility that's there now. I approached them a while back. I had an idea of using it for a downtown event. I was talking about doing a music and a book festival, basically. And I wanted to use that building as it's, you know, it's a beautiful building, it's right downtown, it brings business to downtown if we were to do an event there. They turned me down, basically. They said that they felt like the farmer's market was for the farmer's market. Nobody wanted to move their, their banners, they didn't want to take their banners down, and had displays set up, and they felt like their displays should be there 365 days a year to do that. Now, it made me start thinking about, you know, downtown Withfield a little bit, and I've worked very hard at coordinating with other, other businesses downtown and working to build a lot of cooperation and to build, make Withfield a destination town. I can tell you that the majority of my business in my bookstore, 80% is out of, out of town. There's a lot of them out of staters who come in, and they use this as a great stopping point because they like bookstores, they want to come in, so they'll stop at my shop, and then they shop at the, the other venues there, and I make recommendations for restaurants and that kind of things. But I really feel like Withfield needs a venue that's downtown so that we can have events there that people can then walk to some of the other stores, and they can walk to the restaurants, and they can walk over to, you know, Jojo's Attic, they can go over to Pedals, they can, they can do all of those things, and so I think it's really important. And I think that that building is being economically very underutilized at this time. It's only open probably 30, maybe 35 days out of the year. Other than that, it's pretty much closed. Now, they do store stuff there, so it is used for them to store their things there. But there's still, you know, 300 days out of the year where it could be used for other events, which could generate money for the town. The, well, it just seems to me that having the building vacant most of the time just doesn't give the impression that we want, that we are a vibrant, vibrant town, that we're up and coming, and it helps make this, this place a destination where people will come to, to Withfield. So I've talked to some of the other businesses around town. I think a lot of them are very interested in that. A lot of them are interested, if we have events, not necessarily my event, but other events, they're very interested in, in coordinating and working with whoever wants to do something in that, to make it a downtown event. The cost to the town is very little. They've already got the building, it's already set up, you don't have to close roads, you have plenty of parking, so it could be utilized for all of those things. And I just, I just really feel like it would take very little to do that. Now, I also realize that the farmer's market is vital to our town also. So what I'm talking about is having events that are on days other than when the farmer's market is open. So if the farmer's market is already scheduled to be open, there shouldn't be an event scheduled. This should take priority. When I was looking at doing, doing an event, it was during February. Now, there's not a lot of farmers out there that keep a lot of produce in there during, in, in February and March. It just doesn't happen, okay? So the building basically could be utilized, and of course, the town could then charge money for the use of the building. We could promote it, I think, and, and have people bring a lot of, a lot of income into the town. But right now, because the farmer's market, the new lease for the farmer's market basically says the farmer's market controls whether or not there's an event, an event there, they've made it very clear that they're not willing to move any of the displays. A lot of the people have set up permanent displays there. Now, keep in mind, these are not, you know, a lot of the farmers. They're people with more crafts, probably so, that have their, their display booth set up, and they don't wish to tear them down between shows. There are going to be three or four weeks between shows. Every other farmer's market I know of in this state, and we do farmer's market, I'm a farmer, I have a farm here in Withfield down towards Speedway, and my wife does farmer's markets. I mean, so we're very aware of what that takes. Every other one, you go in, you set up, when you're done, you leave, and then the facility is used for other things for the town during that. Pulaski does it, you know, Marion does it, Independence does it, they all, they all use that, and that's what I'm asking for, for us. Now, because of the way the lease is now, and I've read a copy of the lease, the farmer's market has complete control. So there's, there's just a few people who don't want to move their stuff to do this. It can be changed, and what I would ask the board to do is not, you don't have to make any decisions right now, but what I'd really like to see is that you notify the farmer's market that you're looking at possibly making a change to the lease. That has to be done within 60 days of December 31st, and that'll give you time to review what is the real feasibility of doing that. How much money could that generate for the town? How much business could that generate for the hotels, the restaurants, the vendors right downtown? And I can tell you from my experience, people, especially in the book business or the record biz, business or whatever, when somebody comes to a show, usually it's one of the spouses that has any interest. The other one lasts about 30. The other one lasts about 30 minutes, and then they're like, hey, I'm going to go downtown and walk around and leave you to shop. So I think it's very doable. But if we can get just a message, or just send them that we're looking at changing the lease to allow a committee that's objective and unbiased to be able, if you want to do an event there, to present to them and let them make the decision, let them decide what's best for the town of Withfield, and then to make the decision of when the farmer's market is not being utilized as an open farmer's market, that it can be utilized for something else. And that's what I've came here to ask you to do today. I know they've got a five-year lease right now, which they just signed, that gives them complete control and autonomy to run that building. I'm just asking for an unbiased committee that can make decisions for the, and consider it for the best of Withfield, the downtown businesses in Withfield. So thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is Lisa Shell. It's the same topic, I assume? We have three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Just as a brief follow-up, Randy and I chose this little town and were quite impressed with all the changes that were being made in this little town. The sidewalks, the signage, the walkthrough from Spring Street to Monroe, and so on and so forth. And that was one of the reasons we chose to buy a building in downtown Withfield and create a small business in downtown Withfield. And one of the things that makes a small town a good town are things like that. But another thing that makes a small town a great town, which Withfield could be, is having an excellent downtown venue. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Teresa Campbell. Again, state your name and address, please.
Teresa Campbell, 520 Country Club Drive. Thank you all for listening tonight. I wanted to come tonight to have a clearer understanding of the relationship the farmer's market has with the community. Randy approached me with his idea of the literary conference and an event planned in a winter month to help downtown business and the town itself. When I was told the farmer's market refused to allow the use of the building on an off weekend, I just didn't understand. I recall the downtown organization making it a priority to help find the farmer's market a permanent home where they could operate year-round. As a member of the downtown organization then, we were focused on creating partnerships. Luckily, a building was purchased by the town of Withfield for the primary use of the farmer's market. The building in previous years has been used for other events, so I am just wondering why it isn't available now to be used. Since the town of Withfield does so much to bring this beautiful building to the downtown area, I believe the building that is owned by the town should be available for occasional community events, especially when the farmer's market is only being used two days a month. On a side note, I really appreciate the initiative that Randy has taken to plan such an event that would benefit so many downtown businesses in a month that is predictably slow. Thank you.
Thank you. All down here, we have Ms. Lauren Hedrick. Heldrich, excuse me.
Sure, sure. So I was going to introduce Laura Heldrich to you all tonight. She's joined us tonight. Laura is our new human resources director and wanted to come to the council and introduce herself. And she told me she signed up for Citizens Period, and I said, well, I'll get you under new business, but you already had the list, so we're going to cover it under both. But welcome Laura Heldrich to the, to the town of Withfield as our new human resources. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. Welcome. All right, there's nobody else signed up for Citizens Period, so we're going to move forward under new business, and that'd be Town Manager Freeman, please.
Nothing at this time, Mayor Taylor.
All right. Reports, any upcoming meetings? Town Clerk Sherry Corvina?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I have several. The first is the Withfield Recreation Commission will meet on Wednesday, October the 9th at 5:30 at the Withfield Community Center. The Withfield Planning Commission will meet on Thursday, October 10th at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. The town of Withfield municipal offices will be closed and all services curtailed on Monday, October 14th due to the Columbus Day holiday. As a reminder, the Withfield Town Council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, October 15th has been canceled. The Withfield Redevelopment Housing Authority will meet on Wednesday, October 16th at 12:00 noon at the Housing Authority office. The New River Regional Water Authority will meet on Thursday, October 17th at 10:00 a.m. at the water plant in Austenville. The Withfield Board of Zoning Appeals will meet on Thursday, October 17th at 11:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. The Downtown Withfield Incorporated Board of Directors will meet on Monday, October 21st at 5:30 at the Downtown Withfield office. The Joint Industrial Development Authority of With County will meet on Thursday, October 24th at 3:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And the last one, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Withfield Town Council will be held on Monday, October 28th at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And that's all.
Very much. Moving forward is council member time. I'll ask Councilwoman Johnson if she has anything to bring at this time.
I have nothing at this time.
So we're going this way. So I do have a question for management that was brought to my attention. When we were talking about the citizen, the VDOT responsibility for the brush and the trees and stuff when you first come off the interstate there. I know it was brought up once before. We personally don't want to necessarily take it on because then we'll, it's more money and more work for them, but has VDOT gotten back with us at this point to try to?
So, yeah, so the explanation there is, is that there's lands designated basically for the interstates through the Federal Highway Administration, and they're managed by, by the states, and in our case, of course, the state of Virginia through VDOT. These are called limited access areas. If you pay attention, as you're going down the interstate, you'll see some little wire fence and whatnot on the interstate. They're fairly discreet, but they do widen out at the interchanges, bridges, and all those sorts of things. VDOT maintains all of that property within the limited access zone, including even the asphalt under the bridges. All of that is maintained by VDOT. I'm not going to say there's not an exception here or there. We might fix a pothole or something in the, in the street or something like that down there. We might blow a little bit of right-of-way where it's grass and that sort of thing. But these really high, steep embankments, as you come off of the exits, like at 73, that is all in the VDOT limited access zone, and it's, and it's, and it's a real, it's a really hazardous place to work, and we understand their challenges. But while they would probably gladly accept our offer to take over that maintenance for them, it's not something I would recommend that we do at this time unless we just feel like they're not meeting our needs and we just must. It's, it's, it's a time and resources and safety concern for me, but VDOT would gladly allow us, I'm sure, to begin maintaining those areas, but they're not going to pay us a niffle to it.
In that particular area, there's a sinkhole, and there's also, you can't even, this is one of the three, but you can't even see the business net from their interstate and see business that's right there. I know they're concerned, and they came to us several times, and I know, I think it was Mindy Elaine that reached out to VDOT, but it seems that they didn't reach, they didn't answer your quest.
Just to add to what Town Manager Freeman offered, we did meet with the VDOT representative. They will do some maintenance along the, the areas of limited access that sort of coordinate with the town streets. However, they're not going to mow it to what we're used to in town. As you know, our Public Works employees, they will mow grass and vegetation to a very low height, but when you typically see limited access maintenance along the interstates and the interchanges and the exits, they'll bring in big brush hog equipment, and they will chop it down. Sometimes it will look quite ragged, actually, when they do. So they're not, they're not usually set up to come in and maintain it to the height that we would typically look at in town with our typical right-of-ways. But I don't mind calling them.
It's not a manicured.
Exactly.
Finish mowing, which is what we would do.
And some of the concerns around Exit 41, as you all know, that is a VDOT construction project. They're realigning that interstate interchange, Pepper's Ferry Road and Nye, Nye Road. So during an active construction site, they're also not going to do any sort of vegetative things.
That site will be better than it ever did under construction now. But, you know, the sinkhole and the fact that some of the vegetation, vegetation has grown so that you can't even see the retails or the hotel signs from the street. I mean, I think if we can just look at it and...
You know, I think if, if it's the council's wishes, I mean, I think we could ask some of our crews to do some selective pruning and some, some things like that. I, I just have some reservations about them spending a lot of time in that zone.
Well, that's even, that's a, that's a bad area altogether.
Yeah, it's tough.
And so I wouldn't really jump out and ask anybody to do it, but at some point, and I don't know if the people that, and businesses that are affected by it, if they would rally and send something to VDOT, I don't know. They've got all that commute, all that equipment out there now anyway to do things. I just want to bring it to attention again because it was brought back up.
We can certainly reach back out and, and gently apply a little more pressure to see if we can get some additional response.
That's all I can ask. That's all I have. Vice Mayor?
I don't hear anything at this time.
I don't want to hear anything.
There's no more business from council? There's no miscellaneous business? Council finds it now that they need to go into closed meeting? Closed meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711A, dot 7A, consultation with legal counsel regarding actual probable litigation regarding the 20th Street Bridge? And we're doing both together, or we can go ahead and do it right now and make a motion for that?
I have a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, concerns? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any oppose? The next closed meeting pursuant to 2.2-3711A29, discussion regarding the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position of the governing body regarding the museum connector project content. Need a motion?
So may.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Any oppose? Does council need a 10-minute recess, 5-minute recess? No? So we will now go into...
Now, if the town council now feels that necessary to reconvene into an open session, by stating that the town council is now in open session, a motion will be necessary to certify that only matters lawfully convening the open session we're discussed. I need a motion.
A motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, is there any further discussion? And this would be a roll call vote. Councilman Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Edson, aye.
Taylor, aye?
No, it's not.
Unless council knows of any further business. No? Well, we are adjourned. Thank you everybody.